This conference will now be recorded.
The last session, what we were talking, we were talking about basic fundamentals related to how a new company is to be created. Everybody was able to take out these names. Company name, product. Yes, no, whatever we discussed in the last session.
Yes.
Yes.
Oh. Now, we will talk about something called as baseline configuration steps. When we talk about this baseline configuration step, let us only try to understand this configuration step name and then we will see every step in detail with a practical real-time example. Okay, so first one, we will talk about company.
Yeah, two or three.
Company code. Others please go and mute. Assignment of company to company code. And this is the step number one. In short, the first point. One will be account groups. Fourth one will be retained earnings account. In short, how many steps in the chart of account?
Four.
There are kept in a separate box. And then we'll go to third point. It is fiscal year variant. Then assignment of fiscal year variant to company code. How many settings in fiscal year variant?
Two.
Two settings in fiscal year variant. Fourth point. Posting period variant. And here it will be sign posting period variant to company code. And then open and close posting period. In posting period variant, how many steps?
Three, two.
Three, not two. There are three. Take the one. Field status variant. And here it will be assign field status variant to company code. And then the last one would, only these two. In field status variant, how many we got?
Two.
Only two settings in field status variant. And then sixth one. GL tolerance group. Customer vendor tolerance group. And then it will be user tolerance group. In short, how many tolerance groups?
Three, three sir.
Three tolerance group. Seventh point would be controlling area. And then assign controlling area to company code. And then activate controlling area components. How many in controlling area?
Three sir. E.
Three in controlling area. Next one, tax procedure. And then assign tax procedure to country. How many in tax procedure?
Two.
Two in tax procedure. And then point number nine. Activate profit center accounting. This is only one step. Profit center accounting activation. And then point number ten. Classify GL accounts for document splitting. And document splitting characteristics for for documents splitting characteristics. And then zero balance clearing account. And then activate the document splitting. These are mandatory or important ones from the documents splitting. How many we listed?
Four. Four.
We listed four. Okay, thus. Next one. Non-leading letter. Fiscal year variant assignment. Posting period variant assignment. How many in non-leading letter?
Three sir, three.
Three.
Let all groups up.
Next point number twelve. Local and group currency assignment for leading and non-leading letters plus currency conversion settings. Exchange rate maintenance. This is another point. And then point number thirteen would be perform baseline configuration. Consistency check. Fourteenth point. Maintain GL master. Profit center master. Profit center master. Next one. Maintain document number ranges. Point number sixteen. Post GL account document. Point number seventeen. Display GL line item report. GL balance report. Trial balance report. How many settings here?
Three sir.
You've got three settings here. Right, if you perform all these configuration settings and if you follow these activities in the similar sequence, you are good with the baseline configuration. In short, when we talk about baseline configuration, point number one is what? Company, company code.
Company code and assignment of company.
And then the last one is what? Trial balance.
Yes sir.
Yes.
Trial balance report.
So when you're talking about baseline configuration, we need to make sure we are in a position to create a company code, the same time we are in a position to post a GL document, generate the GL line item report, balance report, at the same time we also need to ensure trial balance we are able to generate. This is what is part of your baseline configuration and it has to be done in one group. When I say it is supposed to be done in one group, if you start practicing any company code, not now, maybe after a week or two weeks of time, once you feel that yes, now I am comfortable on the baseline configuration, you need to make sure when you sit and when you start practicing from the company code creation till the trial balancing situation, you have something called target time for all the above steps. Initially ninety minutes. Later on sixty minutes. Clear?
Yes sir. Okay.
Meaning you should know, it's not that I will sit leisurely, I will do the configuration, it will not work out. Okay, when you're sitting on the practice, you need to make sure you are thoroughly doing it in such a way that you know how it is supposed to be practiced and in the similar way you need to practice. Understood right? So all the configuration steps initially when you start practicing, when I say initially when you start practicing, it is not immediate because by the time we complete all the configuration, probably it will take another two weeks of time. Because we will understand every configuration step, minimum two, two, three times. And once we complete every configuration step two, two, three times with a different level of understanding, first we will focus on what are all the steps, then we will look at every screen, then we will understand how to define the configuration, then we will understand how you will get the details in a project and who will give you what information, how you will collect the requirement from the client and how do you understand something called key data structure or KDS document, what do you mean by business blueprint solution design document? What kind of documentation do we prepare or do we maintain in a project? After understanding every point and when you start practicing, after understanding every point, then when you sit, after understanding all these points, all the seventeen settings, whatever you have, your initial target, if you sit, it is ninety minute. Later on, maybe after practicing one or two times, you'll have to bring it down to sixty minute. Maximum is a sixty minute, maximum is ninety minute, not like morning I will do five settings, afternoon, after lunch I will do three setting, evening after dinner remaining I will do it, will not work out. If you are sitting, you should not get up until you start creating the company code and then you see trial balance. Is my point clear?
Yes, yes sir.
That is how you have to target your practice, not like leisurely I will do it. This is not going to work out. Initially, we will do leisurely, every setting, every point, one by one, to ensure everybody is understanding what is the sequence, why we are maintaining each configuration step and what is the impact of it and why we need to do it. Later on, when you start practicing it, let's say when we're talking about ninety minute, sixty minute approach, everybody will understand what will happen after every step, before configuring what will be the system behavior, after configuring what will be the system behavior, why we are doing like this, every point, each and every of you must understand clearly that okay, I am doing it because of this. Every four digit or three digit, two, two digit naming convention, whatever we do, whatever we take, I want to ensure all of you will have a clear clarity why we don't do it. Not like I will take A, B, C, D, one, two, three, four, will not work out, you'll have to take clearly and you need to have an understanding, the way you do it in a project, in the similar way you need to take inner practice. Like you're creating a company code, you're creating fiscal year, you're creating posting period or controlling area, any other setting. Make sure you understand what is this, how we are defining in the project and how we are defining in the practice. It has to be same or it has to be similar. Meaning your practice should clearly make you understand the way you work in a project. Clear it?
Yes sir.
If the basics are clear, everything is clear. It has to be continuously ninety minute, not now, after completing all the configuration steps, then only your timer will start, not now.
Okay.
So this GL comes in baseline configuration or business process like
Baseline, baseline, baseline. Here we post only one accounting document and then see the report. Because if your config is correct, it will allow you to record the document, am I right?
Yeah.
Yes.
That is what, we post only one document, only one GL document. After that, we will go to business process wherein we will understand in GL model, how do post GL accounting entries, what kind of reports are there? What client or business does on GL model on a daily basis? What kind of requirement you will get, all these points we will understand from GL perspective, then we will move on to APIR and so on. Okay, in short, it takes approximately a month time for everybody to understand all these points clearly and everybody to practice without having any confusion. Because if you are not in a position to take your own company code, create all the configuration, do a posting, bring the trial balance within one hour, we will not be able to understand many points in SAP. Reason, whatever we do in SAP, everything is based on company code. If you have clarity on your company code, if you have clarity on what you're defining, going forward, whatever you add, it is all on the same company code, right? Right from the beginning till all the topics, you all will work on the same company code, not that for every topic I will create a new company code, will not work. It has to be clear-cut understanding, okay, this is what is my understanding. This is what is my example, this is what is my company, company code. In this, I am going to define every process later. So that any report at any given point of time you generated, you need to have a clarity because it is we who is posting the, who is doing the config, it is we who is doing the posting, it is we who is generating the report, am I correct?
Yes sir, yes.
And it is we who is supposed to understand. Tomorrow I post some entries, I do some configuration. Later on, if I am only not able to understand what it is, why I did this config, why this report is showing this number, I forgot how I posted before, no meaning of our practice, agree or not?
Yes.
Yes, correct.
Your practice, your clarity, your understanding, that's it. Not that I practiced, I don't know that time I referred the recording, I did it, but now I'm not able to do it, will not work out. Make sure you understand the requirement clearly, only then we practice. We don't do just like that practice for the sake of completing a topic, we will do it to ensure tomorrow there is no point that you will forget. On the basics, literally you feel that I am bored of practicing the basics, till that extent I'll make you do the basic because if your base is strong, if your initial fundamental understanding logics are clear, everything is automatically clear because we will connect every point in such a way that right from the basic you will understand till the last point which is our balance sheet. Just that you will not know the headings of every configuration topic, but concept of every topic right from the beginning, I'll make you understand, but I'll not tell you this is from this topic, this is from this topic. Clear it? In short, you will only get the logic, concept behind everything. Once we bring any topic later on, you feel that I know this, I know this. Meaning most of the content from every topic going forward, you feel that I am aware of it, nothing will be first time, nothing is completely new to you. You will feel that I am familiar to this. We already discussed or I already heard about this somewhere long back. Understood?
Yes sir.
For today, your assignment is that just to go through the configuration steps, whatever is listed, don't buy hard, don't put any extra additional effort, just read it two times and then leave it. Don't even think whether you are remembering, you are not remembering, whether you are understanding, not understanding, it is immaterial. I just want you to read through twice, two times. Two times for my sake, beyond you two times is for your sake. Okay, for me you'll have to read it two times. For yourself, if you wanted to read it two more times, read four times. For yourself, if you wanted to read five more times, read it seven times, but for me it's two times. For my sake, you'll have to read it two times, whether you remember, you don't remember, you understand, you don't understand, you're getting confused, not getting confused, it is immaterial. Just read company, company code assignment, chart of account and all. The purpose behind reading this twice is to get familiarity on the names, terminology, nothing beyond that. Am I clear?
Yes sir.
Tomorrow when I talk about company, you should feel that okay, I read about company somewhere. Tomorrow if I'm talking about chart of account, I want you to feel that okay, chart of account I heard somewhere. Similarly, if I talk about field status variant, I want you to feel field status variant I heard somewhere. Similarly, if I'm talking about activation of profit center accounting, I want you to feel I heard this is some time back. Maybe if I talk about a document splitting, if I'm talking about non-leading letter, if I'm talking about exchange rate or any other thing, I want you to feel that you heard about this terminology some time back. Is my statement clear?
Yes.
Then what will happen when we are practicing, when we are understanding the concept in SAP, your focus is on the concept. Now what you are doing, you're all getting to know differently terminology, just the name, read and then leave it, agree?
Yes sir.
Yes sir.
Later on, what we will do is, I will show you the screen. When I say I will show you the screen, I'll open SAP ECC server one day, I'll open every step in SAP ECC server so that everybody will have a clarity how each screen is looking like. One. Everybody will understand how each screen is looking like. And then the same screen I will open in the next session in S4 HANA system. Then you are now familiar on the terminology, you are also familiar on every screen, how it is looking like in ACC. Every screen, how it is looking like in S4, am I right?
Sir, yes.
And then I will make you understand what is company, what is company code, what is chart of account. At that time, when we talk about this point, nobody will focus on the screen, everybody will focus on the concept because by then you know company, you know chart of account, you know how the screen looks like in ACC, you know how screen looks like in S4. There I will make you understand what it is, how we define it, why you define it, what will happen with this. Conceptually with simple, simple example we will take. For this, what I want everybody to do is today's assignment is what? Reading through all the points.
Yes sir, all.
And yesterday's assignment, but in the previous session assignment, you'll have to take a company, whatever company you would like to take, it is your choice.
Yes sir.
Take a company, look at their product. Okay, and then understand these points, whether it is India or whatever it is. Local reporting, group reporting and all, just think about it, don't connect any point, just think and then leave it. These connections I'll give you now because even if you try to connect it now, everything will become a loose connection, nothing will work. Right? Even if you try to connect it now, nothing will get connected properly, everywhere it's a loose connection. Nothing will work, but still you just put an effort, try to read it, try to write what it is according to your understanding. Then when I explain every point, I'll take simple, simple example wherein you will get more than fifty companies in a single session. I'll make everybody talk, I'll make everybody give different, different example. For sure, we will write more than fifty companies along with their product. Every company will have the alternative company, yes, no?
Yes sir.
Yes sir.
Yes sir. We took Colgate here, we took toothpaste, then we were able to write so many others, am I right?
Yes sir, right, yes.
I took Santur. Santur means what soap? Which is soap? Body soap or you know the dishwasher soap or clothing soap, everything is different, right? If I'm talking about body soap. Santur. Then you have variety of brands, correct or not?
Yes sir.
If I'm talking about soap but not body soap, it's a dishwasher, dishwasher soap, then you have a different other brands, correct or not?
Yes sir.
If I'm talking about clothing soap, then you, you will tell what is that, different other things are fixer soap or rain soap, different other things.
Yes.
If I'm talking about Ashrwa, let's say if I'm talking about masala or chili powder or anything, whatever you look at around yourself in a day-to-day life, pick only those points so that you feel connected, right? With those examples, am I right?
Yes sir.
Yes.
If I take some example or if I ask you to write something which you don't even know what it is, what is the meaning of your effort? Useless, right?
Yes sir.
When you're working on something, you should feel connected to what it does. Only then you can recollect, okay, it is happening like this, it is happening like this. In short, this In short, this ex- this assignment from the last session. Assignment from this today's session, everybody is clear, right?
Yes, sir.
No additional effort, just to read and then accordingly. Note down somewhere in in your Excel sheet or in your notebook, after that, this is not any assignment, this is on. Sorry?
In this doc- in document 15, the last page document text is missing.
That is not required, because that is the standard only, whatever is mandatory at this moment, only those I write. Many other settings which are not here, I will make you understand, once we are on SAP. Okay, okay? Now, once we understand or once you perform these two activities, then what I will ask you to do is. For example, I will say that we are now. Working on the assignment in which you are taking a company, you are taking the product of the company, am I right?
Yes, sir, yes.
Yes, sir.
You are taking the company and then you are taking product of the company, because at the end, company will have to make profit.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
This is only for understanding, whatever we talk now is only for the understanding purpose. You take a company and then you take their product, this is the first important point for you to begin.
Yes, sir. Yes.
For us to begin, this is the first important point, once these two are taken. Once these two are taken, you need to understand. Company. Will have a product, this product, what company will do, sell?
Sell, sir. For profit.
Company will do sales for this product, and when company is selling this product, what company is expecting?
Return profit. Profit.
Profit.
Company is expecting profit, meaning these one-liners are clear, we are able to connect.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
You are taking a company and then you are talking about, okay, this company is doing business with so-and-so product. Then, with that product, what company is doing, they are doing sales, when they sell, what they are getting, profit.
Profit.
Right? Now, to find out the profit. You need sale. To do a sale, you need a product, to get the product, how you will get the product, either you have to.
Manufacture.
Purchase it.
Purchase.
Or you have to produce it. Am I right?
Yes, sir.
Producing is nothing but manufacturing, purchasing is nothing but buying, in short, we call it as buying and selling, right?
Yes, sir.
Either purchase or produce will give you the cost.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
If you buy, you will incur some amount, if you produce, still you will incur some amount, which is nothing but the cost.
Yes, sir, yes.
Sales minus cost is nothing but profit.
Yes, sir, yes.
If you are purchasing, it is straightforward, agree or not?
Yes, yes, sir.
If you are purchasing, it is straightforward, but if you are producing, it is not straightforward, am I right?
Yes, sir.
If you are producing, it is not straightforward, because based on the product, production process differs or not?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Based on the product, production process differs, now here you need to understand. What company am I talking about, what product am I taking, how this product is manufactured? When I say how this product is manufactured, you take simple, simple example, when I say you take simple, simple example. Everybody eat chips, yes, no?
Yes, yes.
If you are talking about chips, what are the companies, from where you get the chips?
Layers. Bingo.
Let's say. Layers.
ITC, ITC company.
Whatever. Okay, in short, whatever, just an example, this is to get an idea. Later on, you can take any product, you can replace any company, any brand in there, understood?
Yes.
Now here, if you look at layers. Turn back the. Cover. Everywhere, you get something called.
Ingredients.
Yes, no, everybody noticed it?
Yes, yes.
You particularly pick a product which is packaged product. Pick a packaged product and preferably you take something that you eat. Preferably, you take something that you eat, and then if you look at the packet, you turn back, you take layers, chocolate, biscuit, whatever. Juice, whatever you take, it's okay, then back you will get ingredients.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay, when you get the ingredients, it is nothing but list of materials used to produce this chips, am I right?
Yes, yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Is my point clear for everyone?
Yes, yes, sir, clear.
Next time onward, whenever you eat something, whether you are eating a chocolate, you are eating a biscuit, you are eating chips, you are drinking a cool drink or whatsoever. Look at that package, whatever it is, turn back and then see if there is any point called ingredients. Is my point clear?
Yes, sir, yes.
Yes.
You understand, oh, okay, this product is made up of these points. You will get an idea, what are all the input materials used?
Yes.
Yes.
Now, they will not take all the ingredients, they will not grind it to get chips, right?
Yes, yes, sir.
I mean, there will be a process. Taking these ingredients, bringing these chips as an output. There should be a process or there should not be a process, if there is no process, your chips will become a powder or your chips will become a ball, it will not be that chips shape, right?
Yes, there is a process.
There is a process.
So you will have to follow the process. Now, what is that process is what you need to understand. How the product is manufactured, with what ingredients product is manufactured, you need to know or you need not know?
We need to know.
You need to know, only then you will get to know how the cost is coming.
Yes.
Yes.
If you know how cost is coming, then you will understand how profit is getting calculated.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Because every company will say, or even when you start a business, you also will think that, okay. I would like to get, let's say twenty percent margin, thirty percent margin, ten percent margin, am I right?
Yes.
Yes.
Meaning, margin on what? Margin on sales or margin on cost?
Margin on cost.
Or both are possible.
Both are possible.
Yes, yes.
Margin on cost is also pro- possible, margin on pro- sales is also possible.
Yes.
Yes.
But the calculation logic will be different. But I can say that I am expecting a twenty percent profit on my cost. I can also say my sales should include twenty percent profit.
Yes.
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 Right? Both are possible, then slowly we need to understand how to connect it. Then only you will practically understand how a company is operating, right, how company is making profit. Otherwise, what will happen, you will end up configuring the system. Technically, when I say technically, I will tell this is the T code, this is how you define it, you will define it. But you are the one who is practicing the company code, you are the one who is doing everything. But you are the one who is supposed to to understand, at least at a very base level, this is how things are happening, this is how things will work, agree?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Even though we do not know any to, and it is okay, but at least in base, you should know. When I say at least at the base, you take any business, you take a business where you have to put your effort. When I say where you have to put your effort. In short, you take a simple example. Everybody likes this.
Yes.
Everybody's favorite, right?
Yes.
Now, let's assume that we want to do this business, it's a monthly business, yearly business or daily business?
Daily business.
Daily business.
It is a daily business, meaning you will realize profit on a daily basis?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, right, you will realize the profit on a daily basis, because it requires daily investment. Now, if you want to do this business, you need some material, right?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
And when I say you need some material, what material do we need?
Material.
All materials.
What is that? Now, from now on, if you eat, it is not enough. Next time, when you eat, you observe all the, whe- whenever you go to that, the place where you get this. Don't blindly go, give twenty rupees, ten rupees, eat and then come back, look at this around it. Look at what and all he is holding on his box or in in his shop, whatever it is. You observe these surroundings, observe that container or whatsoever, what and all he is holding. Meaning, everything is his material, correct or not?
Yes.
Yes.
Including water.
Yes.
Including drinking water, including hand washing water.
Yeah, use and fruit plates, all that.
Right, everything to be included, only then he can find out the profit, yes, no?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
You also need to decide the selling price.
Yes.
You also have to decide the minimum price. Let's say somebody is coming, giving five rupees, do you supply this for five rupees?
No, no.
Twenty rupees.
Let's say, ten rupees you will give?
No.
Yes.
Twenty rupees?
Yes.
Meaning, you have to give it, but when somebody is not giving for five rupees, meaning it is not, it will not work out for them, if they sell it for five rupees.
Yes.
You know that I will get lost?
Yes.
A ten rupees they are not giving means they get lost?
Yes.
Yes.
Whether they get lost or they don't get lost, but it will not work out for them. Yes or no?
Yes.
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 It will not work out if they sell it for ten rupees, then they say that, okay, no, twenty rupees is minimum. When you buy twenty rupees, I will give you another ten rupees, you can bill it for thirty rupees, but not just for ten rupees, am I right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, something like that, twenty rupees they charge, when they charge for twenty rupees. How many they will give you for twenty rupees, twenty or ten?
Four, six. Oh, six.
How many you will get, how many you will get for twenty rupees?
Six to eight.
On an average of. Let's take approximately seven pieces, okay? Let's assume that we are ahead of the competitor, that we are giving seven pieces per twenty rupees. Now, these is seven piece, or each piece contains what?
Puri.
You will have puri, okay, then you have to look at how am I getting the puri?
Puri and um.
When you are looking at puri, how do you get puri, point number one, you can make your own puri, point number two, you can buy from the market?
Yes, sir.
And since this is your daily business, making every day is difficult, right?
Yes.
Because you have to handle everything, you will find it, no, my half of the day is going on making this puri only when I will sell this. And then you might buy it from somewhere else.
Yes.
So here, there are two options, point number one, you will directly purchase it, point number two, you will get somebody prepare on on your behalf, am I right?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
You will get somebody do it on your behalf, now which one is ideal, which one is recommended? Depending on the scenario, both are possible. Wherever you get less cost or depending on your scenario, depending on your requirement, you will pick up accordingly. Okay, now, if you are preparing it, it is okay. But if you are purchasing from outside, there may be a possibility of a scrap. It has to be in a proper shape, right, there should not be any hole before, you have to make a hole in it, right?
Yes.
The puri is already having so many holes, you cannot fill water in it, right?
Hmm, is.
You getting my point or not?
Yes.
Puri alone is not enough, right, puri should be leak-proof, right, there should not be any leakage from the puri. You have, you are the one who is putting a hole in it, it is already, there are already so many holes to work, then can you fill water?
No.
No.
Right? Meaning, you have to consider all these points or not, if you are doing business.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Right, and then you also need what, batani you need, that what is that, cha- chana, whatever it you you require it, right?
Yes.
And you will have to soak it one day before or it's ready, man?
One day before.
You have to soak it, let's say, today I am very tired, okay, I will not soak it tonight, if I don't soak it tonight, tomorrow I cannot do the business, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Negligence, all this will work out here or it will not work out? It will not work out, right, if you don't soak today, you cannot tell tomorrow, everybody will tell that, no, this is very hard, correct or not? This is not properly cooked, this is not properly boiled, agree or not?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Like that, many points are there which you are all, you are all well aware of it, right? What I am referring to here, I am not completing every point, because I want you to fill the blanks, I want you to connect it. Purposefully, tomorrow go and eat pani puri and then observe everything and then sit and then write down. If possible, take a video there, everything, and then playback the video, zoom it, pause it and then see what and all is there, if possible, talk to that person. No need to talk, but you will understand easily, right, agree or not?
Yes.
Then see, if I have to do this business. Say that you will create a company code, your name followed by Pani Puri Center, Chart Bandar. But what's nothing wrong in it, right, everything is a business, yes, no?
Yes.
Yes.
It's only for you to understand, it's only for you to feel connected, feel, you know, interested towards working on this system, that's it. When you will understand, okay, today let me invest thousand rupees, okay, per thousand rupees, what dollar I will get? Then you will understand, okay, if I want to do a pani puri business tomorrow, this thousand rupees is sufficient or not sufficient? Then you will realize, okay, what in dollar require potato, how much potato per kilogram, you will understand, you require onion, how much per kilogram onion, you require what else? Matani you require, how much per kilogram? Coriander. Masala, all this kind of thing, you you need to heat it, you need to prepare it, you need a stove, gas and all.
Yes.
Yes.
Certain things will come for one week, two weeks, one month, certain things will last only one day, correct or not? Meaning, certain things you can buy and stock it, certain things you cannot buy, you cannot stock it, agree?
Yes.
Yes.
Then how do you bring everything onto the paper, how do you work out the business? How do you analyze, okay, this is what let me do, and then if I do this, this will give me profit or it will give me a loss, how do you understand? Then you will understand, okay, it is not a straight line that I can draw? Yes, no?
Yes.
You have to work out different plans, correct or not? Now, when you look at all these points, automatically you start understanding different parts. Meaning, the way you think before, the way you think now will be different or not?
Yes.
Yes.
Right? Example to example, what is happening, the way your thinking is getting changed?
Yes.
Yes.
Right? Slowly, we have to think, slowly, we have to see how it is actually working. Because at the end of the day, you need to meet the customer requirement, at the end of the day, you need to ensure customer is satisfied and your sales are increased.
Yes, yes, sir.
Right, if you are coming to me today, you should come tomorrow also, if you are not coming tomorrow, then I am losing the customer, right? It's a business loss. It's a business loss. Then you need to analyze, you need to investigate why all these things are happening. Now, to do it, what you need to do? You need to analyze your profits also, you need to analyze your sales also?
Yes.
Yes.
Now, how all these things are supposed to be made, you need to think right from the beginning. Which allows you to think practically from a business point of view. Though you will not be able to connect every point now, but at least base will be there with you. Tomorrow, when you are coming across any situation, you will be in a position to think in a different way, am I right or wrong?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Next time, when you go to any shop, when you purchase anything, look at. Look at the bill that you will receive. Wherever you buy, majority, you will get a system-generated bill.
Yes.
Currently in the market, nobody will give you manual written bills, right? Except your grocery Kirana shops.
Yes.
Yes.
You go to any registered company, everywhere it is mandatory for them to give a system-generated bill.
Yes.
Yes.
Why they have to give? Because any purchase, any sale that you do will attract a tax.
Yes.
Yes.
Purchase tax, sales tax.
Yes.
And these taxes are supposed to be filed to the government?
Yes.
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 Input tax, output tax, sales tax, purchase tax, yes, no?
Yes.
Yes.
Meaning, everything is legal?
Yes.
Yes.
Right? But majority, what we do, when they are giving the bill, sometimes we will tell, I don't want the bill, correct or not?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Sometimes you take the lift, bill on the left, left hand, you throw it from the right hand, you don't even look at what is there inside it, correct or not?
Correct.
And majority, you will be swiping your debit credit cards?
Yes.
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 Right? When the swiping is completed, you will get a print from that pass machine, point of sale machine, that swiping machine?
Yes.
We are very smart, even before they ask, we say that copy is not required, correct or not?
Yes.
Next time you, you go swipe, take that copy, look at that copy, what is there inside it? That copy contains lot of information?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Look at that information and don't look at any copy, look at your copy. Where you swipe your debit card or your credit card, whatever the print you get it, you keep it. Because that, that copy does not stay for long because that ink on it will disappear maybe after one or two days, am I right?
Yes.
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 It will become empty paper. If you keep, keep it for long, it will become empty paper. You keep it, take a photograph, keep it on your mobile phone. I will tell you when it is right time, I will make you understand what is that copy, what we need to understand from that copy. Okay, it's all connected to a S A P.
Yes.
I will make you understand why when you need to understand it. This photograph, whatever you keep it with you, will make you understand different points in a S A P T I. Okay?
Okay. Yes, sir.
Similarly, whenever you look at any invoice or whenever you purchase anything, keep the bill and then take a photograph, keep it with you. Smart copy is enough, you don't need to have the physical copy, keep a photograph, keep it with you, whatever you purchased. And look at how the bill is looking like. You buy from two shops, three shops, look at two, three invoices and observe whether every shop or every. Company bill is the same or it is different?
Same. More or more?
It is not same, right? It is different.
Different, sir, different letterhead, different.
More or less.
It is different, it is not same, right? The only name is, bill is the same, invoice is the same, but the way bill looks, invoice looks, the calculations, everything is different.
Yes.
Yes.
Right? So we have to observe all these points. That is what you have to learn, that is what you have to understand. As a F I C O consultant, all the config and all, you do it on your own also. I don't need to explain anything. Google is more than enough, correct or not?
Correct.
Google is more than enough, Google will teach you better than. I may be showing only one screen, I may be able to explain only three fields from out of ten fields, but Google will tell ten out of ten. Purpose of every field, which I may not be able to do it. But logic, concept is what you have to understand, wherein Google cannot make you understand the concept, agree with me?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Whatever we have to understand, only that we have to understand, the remaining portion. It is all automatic. When you get the concept, you gain that confidence by default and that will allow you to understand many points automatic by default from your side. Clear these points so far? What you need to do?
Yes.
Same pieces, but I hope everybody got an idea, right?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
And you will start or we will start thinking in a different, different way. I will make you create a different companies, different company codes. Different, different points we will understand because in the project, all these things will be explained to you by the business, by the user, by the client. You don't need to do anything, only for the purpose of practicing, we have to think because we don't have any client now, right? Nobody will give you requirement.
Yes.
Nobody will test what you do, it's all you.
Yes.
Yes.
You'll have to play client role, you have to play the consultant role, you also have to play the user role during your learning, during your practice.
Yes.
Look at the system, look at the business from a business point of view, from a consultant point of view, from a user point of view, parallel at the same time. Only then you will see, okay, I think this is okay. From business point of view, no, this is not okay for me. From a user point of view, this is very tough, it's taking a lot of time. Then you will get the different ideas, how user thinks, how client thinks, how consultant thinks.
Yes.
Then accordingly you will, because it takes time. Practically, we cannot expect five places of experience, knowledge in four to five months. Practically not possible, but wherever possible. To the best of our effort, to the best of year practice, you have to ensure, this will add value to your understanding. Tomorrow, your understanding, your base will make you get strong foundation. If you have the strong base, good understanding, good conceptual logical thinking. In any project, wherever you join tomorrow, by default you feel comfortable, confident because you feel that you are understanding what is happening there. Only that part, because company to company, project to project, person to person, the way they talk, the way they think, the way they understand, the way they work, everything is different, correct or not?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
It's all different. So you cannot say that, oh no, this is how it works, not possible. If this is not how you want, you can customize it, agree?
Yes.
And this is not you want, you will customize it. Though it's the same, but you can still customize it. How you will customize it, you will understand it as you move forward. Clear so far, right? Everyone?
Yes, sir, clear.
Right, fine, then, then let me stop this now and I want you to work on the three assignment. Assignment number one. Take a company, write down their products. Assignment number two, read and then lead the configuration steps of a baseline. Assignment number three, whatever the business that I explained now, take anyone business of your choice and then see how it is working. Just think, don't do anything. Just to think, okay, this business is happening like this, this is what they are using, they are manufacturing it, they are buying and selling, like if you look at. People who, you know, sell bananas, people who sell, let's say apples and all, are they manufacturing bananas?
No.
No.
Are they manufacturing?
No.
Right? Meaning, it all depends on what example are we taking, it all depends on how we are understanding it.
Yes.
Working is not enough. How you are working, how you are understanding, that plays a key crucial role. Else, the same point will make you clear till one distance. After that, the same point will allow you to take a U turn, come back to the zero again, agree?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
You need to have a clarity right from the beginning, only then it is possible, else, at one point of time, we will take a U turn, we will come and stand it. From the point where we started, meaning at zero we will start and again. That is where many people, even after learning a S A P F I C O field, I don't know anything, I am not confident, I am not sure because they are taking a U turn at one point. But they do not know this U turn is taking them to zero, back to square again.
Yes.
That should not happen, you need to have clarity. The way you are moving, though you are moving slow, but make sure you are not taking a U turn. Coming back to the same starting point again, don't come there. Go to the destination, if you start, it's okay, let us struggle a lot, but and then move forward. Continue the journey, by default you will understand many points. At least you gain that confidence, you will be in a position to talk, think, that is important.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
And then the remaining portion, practically we will understand in the tomorrow's session. Tomorrow, these configuration screens, whatever we discussed now, this is sixteen seventeen. Every screen I will open in E C C server tomorrow, in which is server?
E C C server.
In S A P E C C I will open tomorrow. And in the day after tomorrow's session, I will open every setting in S four Hana server. And then I will configure one company code, I will do one posting in E C C server. Same information as it is, we will do it in S four Hana server, then everybody will get an idea how E C C is working. From first step till the trial balance, how S four Hana is working from the first step till trial balance, am I right?
Yes, sir.
Everybody will have a fair clarity from E C C point of view, from S four Hana point of view. And then we will start understanding about every point, then we will talk about company. What is company, company code, what is company code, assignment, why we are assigning it? How you will decide the naming convention for it or nomenclature? What nomenclature we will take it, who will tell you this, how you will propose to the client? All these points we will be understanding, once we are all clear with the basics. Then only you can connect, then only it makes meaningful or significant difference in your understanding, else, you will listen today, you will forget it tomorrow. Our effort should add value, not reduce the value. Okay? Fine, then the remaining portion we will discuss tomorrow. From tomorrow, we will understand conceptual point with more different, different examples, okay? Good night.
Yes, sir.
Good night, sir.